Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, this notice is hereby given. It's Tuesday, November 22nd. We're meeting in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl. The meeting is now called to order. Leonard, would you do the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Precious Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this day that you give us each day. Be with each one of us. Give us the knowledge and the know-how to do what we need to do for the county. Help our leaders in government, in Washington. Show them the way. Be with each one of our boys in the service that's protect us each day, near and far. But give us our shortcomings, and thank you so much for our blessings. In the name of Jesus Christ, in the name I pray. Amen.
Would you join me, please, as we pledge the flag of our proud country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge to Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
I do not know. No. Bob, we have special presentations this morning?
Yes. Judge Commissioners, we're here to celebrate anniversaries for four individuals. The first is Virginia Severo. In Virginia, has been with the county for five years, works in the county clerk's office.
I want to thank the Commissioners and the Judge for all the good work that they have done for the Hood County taxpayers and employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second individual is Yvonne Edmondson, who works for the Constable in Precinct Three. But unfortunately, Yvonne is not going to be able to be here, so we'll make sure that she gets her award. The next is Magnalina Corral. The fourth person is Krista Gail Smith, who works in the Adult Probation Department, and she's been here 10 years.
Thank you.
All right, the item A under five, Joe Williams of the Lake Granberry Waterfront Homer Association wanted to be here, but he's called out of town on family business and can't be here, and he's going to reschedule that. So that's, that'll be off the agenda. Item number six is, any citizen wants to comment about any items on the agenda? The sheriff has a form for you to fill out. Does anybody wish to make comments? No one? Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Hearing no comment, Judge, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I.
All right, we have a- Motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Roan to approve the consent agenda. Anybody have any discussion about that?
The only one I discuss is H2. We had a conversation with the DA yesterday about this car, but purchasing is not here right now to ask a question. So if we declare it surplus, and she puts it on the auction, can we take it back off if we work out an agreement with the DA? That's a question.
Why don't we just pull that off this time?
We'll pull off H, item two. Is anything else?
amend the motion to remove H2.
Okay, the motion is amended by Commissioner Simpson and seconded by Commissioner Roan to pull off H2, and that's for the 2007 Taurus for the District Attorney, that's pulled off. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, I'd like to ask Chad Jordan to come up and give a small presentation about what's going on in our Constable Precinct Four.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. We talked about a small presentation, and we're just going to give a brief overview of 2011, what's been occurring in a calendar year in the Precinct Four Constable's office. We have an organizational chart, tells how we're broke down within that office, with myself, administrative assistant Leslie Brockett, Roger Hill. We have our ASAP contract. We're proud to say that we continue to have that contract with the school district. We have a great partnership in assisting them in their truancy issues that they have, and in turn, they fund that deputy, and it costs the county zero. The good thing about it is, is that deputy helps return dollars back to them by working on their truancy through TEA, on their cases. In 2011, so far to date, we have attempted 2,490 attempts on process, and this is just the civil side, not the criminal side, civil process. And out of that, we've served today 1,190 court papers out of Hood County. When out of those alone, we have collected in civil fees, which puts us above where our mark is for the year and the budget for the office, at $36,273.14. Total warrants collected to date is $118,027.61. Now ASAP Contract, which is Absent Student Assistance Program, is a separate deal that Deputy Hatfield takes care of, has had to date with, in the first, or let me back up, the last semester of, last school year, and the first semester to date, he's had 453 cases referred to him, and those are parents and juveniles. And with those, he educates the parents on the truancy laws, and determines whether or not there's need, and through the school, they determine whether or not they need to file a case in the court. And to do the job of civil process and those truancy, we've traveled 24,236 miles in the past 10 months. In 2009, we took over the tax sales for the county, and our totals so far this year, we've had 336 orders of sale on tax sales. We had 52 of those withdrawn, pulled from sale. We sold 28 actual properties that were sold to individuals this year, in this 10-month period. 256 of them were struck off, and that means that they ended up going back to the county. Now, out of those, the fees paid prior to sale, out of those that were pulled from sale, we collected $24,648.28. And we sold those properties for a total of $180,380.84. The money still owed on those ones that were struck off is $52,173.26 for a grand total out of all of those for this calendar year of $257,202.38. And that's on our tax sales. I will say that out of the tax sales, since we took it over in 2009, we have a grand total that we've done and collected on those, out of those orders of sale, $481,328.33. That's my report.
Chad, you might go over, I mean, if you're done, what we talked about when you moved to courthouse, you'd like to just kind of go ahead and broach the situation?
One of the things that, and I'll bring it up now, and we'll bring it up again later, is to approach you, each of you as Commissioners Court, to discuss the tax sales. We're going to be moving into courthouse, we do the tax sales, we're going to put, I understand, the boards back up there for the notices and citation postings and so on, since we do maintain those for the courts, the different courts each, is that when we do the sales, we would like to have the designated place in the courtroom. We have so many people that come to tax sales that are elderly individuals, some that are handicapped, and it's kind of tough for some of them to be out there in the cold in the wintertime, and in the spring when it's so cool outside. We would like to discuss with y'all that when we do make that change, and you make the designation back to the courthouse, we'd like to have it on the first Tuesday of the month in the courtroom. And it's a short period. Our last sale, we had 186 properties, which is the largest sale that the county has ever had in one sale, and we finished that sale by 1:00. By law, we have from 10:00 till 4:00 PM. We start at 10:00, and we're usually done before noon, so it wouldn't interfere with any of the courts that Judge Cochrane or Judge Tuggle might have within that courtroom. And I'll submit that to you to consider it, and after court, anytime between now and the next court, I'd like to discuss it with you if you have any questions. So when we do vote on that, we can try and make that change.
When do you think you're moving?
Our furniture's not delivered until the 12th of December is our last conversation that they would be here. We're going to start progressively changing, moving nonessential items when that happens, and to allow IT to do what they need to do to move everything. We'll move everything except the computers and essential paperwork we have to have. We're looking at probably the third week of December.
Chad, would you have Mary put that on the agenda for next time to going into courtroom to do the property sales?
Yes, sir, I will.
Chad, do you have any sales between now and when you're going to move?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay.
We finished out the year. The reason we had such a large sale in the last sale is because of the tax office. They get inundated at the end of the year with the new taxes coming out, the new appraisals, and getting those bills out, and it makes it kind of tough whenever we bombard them with a tax sale at the same time. So we did it all in September to avoid that.
Okay.
Motion to approve his report.
All right, I have a motion to approve Chad's report by Commissioner Berry, I think, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton. Any discussion on this? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chad. Does any other department have any report ready for today? I've asked several, but I know that Kathy was at school, and she couldn't do it, but, so we'll get her next time, okay? All right. All right, item number eight is subdivision roads and plats.
Morning, Judge Cochrane.
Morning.
Commissioners. The agenda item is to set a public hearing to discuss and consider the approval of the request for partial road abandonment of Huddleston Road. This past week, Commissioner Roan had received a couple of letters from property owners wanting to abandon that section, actually close it off to keep individuals from coming in and dumping on their property.
And partyers.
Road operations recommend setting a public hearing on December 27th, Commissioners Court meeting. This one will be at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to set a public hearing to discuss consideration approval of the request for partial abandonment of Huddleston Road. Any further discussion?
Only that I'd like to mention publicly a thank you to Don. Once again, he has immediately followed up on the request that I had. I drove out there and looked at this, saw the problem, totally agreed with what the people were asking for, and he followed up on it, contacted the individuals. They've since contacted me by letter. They're very happy with his service, very happy with the solution, so.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is development and compliance.
Judge, this one is to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of lots 289R and 303R, Block 1, Section 2, in Bentwater on Lake Granberry. We'd also like, staff would like to recommend to set this public hearing for the December 27th, Commissioners Court meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Berry made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Simpson, to set a public hearing for the Bentwater replat. Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is public hearing to consider appropriate action on Garnett Technologies.
Judge, this is a site development plan that the Development Commission reviewed last Thursday. It's located at 201 Eminem Ranch Road. The development is comprised of a TIM employee office and manufacturing warehouse. The development does have public water, but will require an on-site sewage facility, which James McCawson has reviewed and preliminary gave approval for. Like I said, the Development Commission did review this last Thursday, and they sent a recommendation to the Commissioners Court to approve the site plan.
All right, do I have a motion?
Public hearing.
Commissioner Berry made the motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, set a public hearing, yeah. Commissioner, did you make the motion?
We have to open a public hearing.
All right, a public hearing is now open for the Garnett Technologies Site Development Plan on, at 201 Eminem Ranch Road. Anyone wish to make a comment? I believe that's Don and Shirley Kapanski, right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Any one? Then the public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton. All in, a further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Budget and finance. Item number one is consider budget line item amendments.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I did not bring any budget amendment requests today. I don't know if any of the elected officials would like to address the court. I'm not aware of any.
Thank you. That's good news. How about considered bills?
Judge, Commissioners, the total of the- Bills, including the one item supplement that was requesting your reimbursement that I sent to you on Friday, come to $558,079.61. One of the larger items is for purchase communications equipment through Breakthrough Communications of $96,082.23. That is equipment to be purchased under a grant to be reimbursed through the Sheriff's Department. And then for the County Clerk archival records restoration, that is $78,672, and that's part of the County Clerk's records restoration plan. To comm data for fuel card purchases, $32,974.81 for the month. Then to J.C. Stoddard Construction, this is their progress billing on the courthouse through October 31st for $154,642.82. We've got Judge Tuggle moved into the courthouse. I'm not sure when J.C. Stoddard is going to submit their final billing, but-
Stan, would you give us a brief kind of overview of where we stand on that account? If it's overdrawn, and with this amount and everything like that, can you?
Yes, Your Honor, I believe, according to the Treasurer's records, that account presently is overdrawn about $232,000. 232,178. After today's court, if you approve this payment to J.C. Stoddard Construction, and also the $12,000 payment to HDR Architects, the overdraft would be almost $401,000. Now, you do have committed to this fund $150,000 out of the courtroom security fund that you've already set aside. In the courtroom security fund, I believe you have actually $220,000 available in total.
And is this overdrawn primarily because we haven't been receiving reimbursements from the state based on their holdback philosophy?
Yes, Your Honor, they have withheld about $658,000 at the Texas Historical Commission. And I think there is some question as to whether their retainage is calculated properly. I've referred that to the county attorney for his review to see if my ideas on that are correct. But yes, I suppose I need to ask the court to consider at some time in the future how you wanted to address this. It seems to me it would be fair to carry an overdraft in this account for a while in the amount that we expect to receive from the Texas Historical Commission. But if you look at this bill from J.C. Stoddard, they show a balance to finish, including the retainage, of $474,686. Now, that retainage is $203,701. The contingency is $142,612. And the letter that you signed last week to finish estimated that the work remaining to be done on-site was about $100,000. And that comes up to $446,000. And I think the difference between that and the $474 is probably the work that they completed from November 1st until November 14th, when you signed the letter, and that would be about $29,000. But I'm hopeful that before we get the final billing from J.C. Stoddard, we will have received assurance that all the subcontractors have been paid, that there are no subcontractor liens filed against the property, and then, of course, if the court has any special considerations, if there's any special follow-up you would like for us to do before we consider paying the final bill, which we haven't received yet from J.C. Stoddard, I hope you will let me know. But that bill is for their services through October 31st, and that is included in the slate of bills that I've provided for you that come to $558,079.
Okay.
I would recommend these for your approval, so we can get these bills paid.
Move ratify to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Roan to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion?
The only thing I have to ask, Stan, is I still don't understand why we're paying HDR $12,014 when it was a $9,500 payment. Why do we have a June payment still lumped in there?
He sent me an email and said that that was an old bill that had never been paid, and so apparently it was just lost until now. His accounting group checked their records, and they had submitted the billing in June. We checked our records, could not find that it had ever been paid or submitted. I didn't have a copy of it. And so this is actually paying an old bill.
You have any idea what it was for, or anything like that? What they sent?
Well, he sent the breakout down. If you, I mean, there's pre-construction, there's construction, and then there's, he sent that along with the documentation to Stan, but, you know.
Looks legit. I just don't understand how that amount could have been-
Missed.
Missed, you know, but obviously missed by then.
I don't know if it was our oversight, if they tried to deliver it and it never got properly delivered. We did check the records very carefully, and that particular invoice has never been paid. We don't have a copy of it anywhere else.
Never been paid, but never received either.
Not as far as my records indicate, Commissioner.
Well, regardless of where we assign fault, it has to be paid.
All right, is any further discussion on ratifying the paying of the bills? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And under miscellaneous is consider and take appropriate action to hire temporary housekeeper.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. We've got a situation with one of our housekeepers is out on medical leave. It's unsure when he's going to be back. We've got one temporary hired, but we're coming up on the holiday season. We've just got the courthouse back online for our department to take care of. Gloria and Emma both have, they've been working hard. We've had another lady that's been out quite a bit with some medical problems, so I'd like to be able to put someone on for a while, to be able to let Gloria and Emma take some well-deserved time off, and also to keep, again, to get everything settled back down with the courthouse going back online. That's a, I know that we've lost 51, but the courthouse is a much bigger building, and although a lot of it's not going to be used daily, it still has to be taken care of, or it's going to get in, you know, a bad shape up there on the third floor, and all those rooms will still have to be cleaned.
Do you have any idea how long you want to keep the temporary employee?
No, because he's, the problem is he's got a FMLA employee right now, Judge.
All right, good. No way knowing.
I make a motion, we approve. Money's in the budget, so it's mainly, he's just, he's over manpower as far as numbers go, but one's out on, well, actually, director's out on FMLA, and so is the employee, so he's down and shorthanded.
Second. All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is consider and take appropriate action regarding repair and replacement of the roof on Annex 3.
Our building over there at Annex 3, we've got a built-up composite roof on it. The old roof is in bad shape. We've got two or three different places where it's been leaking. I've contacted a couple of different contractors. I have bids in to replace the whole roof, tear off what's there, and replace the whole roof. I've made several calls to other contractors. I have one that submitted a bid to just repair what's there and get it to where it's not leaking in the places that it's leaking. And he is the only contractor that I've been able to get a bid from to repair the roof that has any of the insurance requirements that the county requires to have work done for us. I've talked to a couple of others. They either don't respond to me, or they don't have enough insurance to take care of the work as far as our guidelines go. I've given y'all some of the quotes. We have one quote's $206,000, another one's $137,000 to actually replace the roof, and then I have a bid for $14,500 to go in and patch the places where that roof has bubbled up and actually been broken, and it's laying open up there, so.
Isn't that $1,450?
Mm-hmm. Isn't that what I said?
It's $14,000.
No, $1,450, I'm sorry.
Profit and overhead.
[laughing]
That's what it is.
That's right.
All right, is any discussion on this?
I move that we pay the $1,400 to get it repaired, stop the leak for it this time.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry to apply normal one-inch rigid roof foam, repair bad foam, and repair leaks for an amount of $1,450. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the inter-jurisdictional dispatch agreement with the city of Granberry, and I believe Commissioner Precinct One has been handling that.
Yes, sir, and actually, that goes with item four. We'll take those two together. Currently today, there is only one contract in effect, and it's the old fire protection agreement, very old fire protection agreement that supersedes all of us. agreement, very old fire protection agreement that supersedes all of us. I'm not sure what the thought was when that agreement was, was first originated and passed, but in today's world, it's not a good agreement for either party, the city or the county. That agreement contained language that the county will pay the sum of $5,400 each year for adequate facilities to house firefighting equipment and maintenance on the vehicles. In the new fire protection agreement, and what we did was we separated dispatch out of fire protection agreement and created a dispatch agreement alone, standalone agreement. In the fire protection agreement, the $5,400 has been removed, so the county will no longer make that payment. And then the second piece of this, the next item on the agenda, is the dispatch agreement, and the city agrees to pay $35,000 a year for dispatch. So if we combine the city's payment of $35,000 for dispatch and the $5,400 that's coming off the fire protection agreement, the net is $40,400. Both agreements have been approved by city council in their last meeting. Both agreements have been approved by county attorney, and I would make a motion to approve both agreements as well.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve items three and four, which is the inter-jurisdictional dispatch agreement and the, the mutual aid agreement with the city of Granbury Voluntary Fire Department. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No further items on the agenda. The meeting is now adjourned. It is 9:35.